Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, November the 19th. Let's begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you. Item three, 3.1, Confirmation of the Agenda. We have a resolution.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of November 19th, 2025, as amended with the following additions. Item 5.2.1, A delegation from Cathy Vandermeer, the former Malahide Museum and Archives regarding the 2026 grant requests. Item 6.1.6, Correspondence from the Elgin area primary water supply system regarding the Yarmouth Yards industrial development. An additional attachment to item 7.2, Memo, Questions Regarding Finance Report 22-25, The Mayor's Final Budget. And an additional item to item 5.3.5.1.3, Correspondence Related to 448 Talbot Street West and 215 South Street West from Jacob Sanger, Kristin Hochheim, Abby and Brad Amoto, Bruce and Melissa Pleasant, and Judy Wubs.
Thank you. Mover and Seconder, Deputy Mayor Barber and Councillor Chapman. All those in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Item four, Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Item five, Delegations in Public Meetings. If a public meeting under the Planning Act, you have a resolution to commence a public meeting?
That council do now commence a public meeting at 7:01 PM to receive input from the public with respect to application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for 448 Talbot Street West and 215 South Street West.
Mover and Seconder, Councillor Chapman, Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor. That is carried. Now we're in a public meeting. We have a clerk reading some...
This public meeting is taking place under the Planning Act 1990 as amended. At this public meeting, council will hear public representations regarding application for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for 448 Talbot Street West and 215 South Street West by the owner and applicant, Menno Lodge of Elmer Incorporated and agent, Bearable Construction. Please note that those who do not provide comment or written submission prior to the decision of the appropriate authority may not be afforded the right to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Council will hear comments in the following order: Application, Presentation of the Staff Report by the Manager of Planning and Development, Agents or Applicant, the public, and then Staff and the Clerk.
Thank you. Could the Manager of Planning and Development please provide her report on the application?
Thank you, Your Worship. The proposed application for the official plan amendment is to redesignate a portion of the lands. It's 1,615 square meter scenario from low-density residential to high-density residential. These lands are, were subject to a severance that was brought forward to council a couple of months ago. These lands are being severed off of what is known as the St. John's Lutheran Church lands. And these lands are being severed off to provide a secondary access to these properties to have frontage and access onto Caverly Road. The purpose and effect of the zoning bylaw amendment is to rezone the subject, a portion of the subject lands, which is 6,709 square meters, 1.66 acres in area, from institutional and residential multiple second density zone to a special residential multiple second density zone. And this is to permit an apartment building consisting of 46 dwelling units with a reduced lot frontage from 30 meters down to 20 meters. The proposed residential apartment building is intended to provide affordable housing. The existing lands, so there's existing lands, 448 Talbot Street West, this is where the existing St. John's Lutheran Church is located. And then 215 South Street West, which is where there's an existing one-story residential apartment building with 25 dwelling units owned by Menno Lodge of Elmer. Moving on to figure one shows the location of the subject lands. And moving on to figure two shows the proposal. Moving on to planning policy review. In terms of the provincial policy statement, the policies that are of importance here are intensification and housing, servicing, and that it's important that municipalities meet the achievement of providing complete communities, arrange and mix of housing options, intensification, and planning for affordable, accessible, and equitable housing. So I reviewed those policies with this proposal, and the proposed applications are consistent with the provincial policy statement. Moving on to the County of Elgin official plan. The proposed policies that apply here speak to affordable housing as well as criteria for servicing, and these proposed applications conform to the county's official plan. Moving on to the Town of Elmer's official plan. As I mentioned, there is an application to redesignate a portion of the subject lands from low-density residential to high-density residential to facilitate the proposed development. In terms of applicable policies within the town's official plan, with our official plan, we have affordable housing policies that requires the town to provide an adequate supply of affordable housing and to ensure that there is effective official plan policies in place to encourage and support the provision of affordable housing. There's also a need to ensure that the town's development standards do not impede the ability for affordable housing to occur. As well, within the official plan, we have site suitability policies. Within that, there's a list of criteria, things such as being able to connect to public utilities, sufficient water and sanitary services, access to road networks, onsite stormwater management. Also looks at ensuring that there is sufficient stormwater management, buffering between the development and adjacent sensitive land uses. So this proposed residential apartment building has been reviewed in accordance with these policies. The development will be connected to full municipal services, and there's sufficient supply. A traffic impact study will be prepared prior to site plan approval. The reduced lot frontage does not impede the access to the property. The property will also be required to be fenced, which will potentially mitigate any impacts with neighboring land uses. And lastly, the development, as I've already mentioned, site plan approval, it will be subject to site plan approval, which will require further development criteria to be achieved. And I have that list here because we've already done a preconsultation with the owners. So the things that we are looking for should this application be approved in advance to site plan approval is we are looking for a geotechnical report, functional servicing report, stormwater management report, traffic impact study, shadow impact analysis. So those are the things that we'd be looking for, as well as the site plan application should this application's advance. Moving on through the town's official plan policies, within our residential policies, we encourage infilling for residential development and intensification of vacant or underutilized parcels within residential areas. Lastly, apartment dwellings provide an alternative housing type, and it enhances the type of housing options we can make available within the town. This proposed development meets all of those policies within our official plan. Lastly, moving on to the Town of Elmer zoning bylaw, as I mentioned, there's also a zoning bylaw amendment required. We're rezoning the lands, excuse me, just a portion of the lands, to the residential multiple second density special provision zone, and this is to permit the apartment building. The only deficiency here within the RM2 zone is the reduced lot frontage. The proposed development meets all other zone regulations. Moving on to other matters, site plan approval. As I've already mentioned, site plan approval will be a requirement to address multiple things such as access, onsite parking, landscaping, fencing, onsite snow storage, exterior lighting, servicing, and stormwater management should this application be approved. Moving on to consultation, the application was circulated to town staff and applicable public agencies for comment. Town staff have submitted comments that speak to requiring an entrance off of Caverly Road, requirement for connection to all municipal services, traffic impact study, and a privacy fence is required. Moving on to public agency comments, we received our standard comments from Canada Post requiring a mill panel to be installed in the main lobby of the building. Southwestern Public Health, a lot of times they don't comment on the applications. They did comment on this one. And their comments is that they are currently very supportive of this proposal, and they give their reasons within my report, essentially basically stating that we are in a housing crisis with rental and housing prices outpacing incomes across the province. They feel that this proposal that would provide an additional 46 dwelling units would be welcome changes to the community. It would also promote an increase in general density in the local community, which would also help to promote the efficient use of municipal services and utilities. So moving on to comments from neighborhood. At the time of which I submitted this report, I'd only received two emails. One email had been asking questions, another email had provided comments. They had spoken to, they were asking questions, speaking to fencing, specifically, will a cosmetically appealing fence be requested by the town, balconies on second and third floors, and potential for loss in property values for neighboring properties. As I've already mentioned, a privacy fence would be a condition of site plan approval. In terms of determining what is a cosmetically appealing fence, generally privacy fencing is pretreated lumber. If council wishes for something to be beyond that, that is something that council would need to express at the public meeting. There will be balconies for units on the second and third floors. It's important to note that most of the lands to be developed have an existing apartment building on them, and it's already designated and zoned for an apartment building use. So we're the actual physical building for what's being called Menno Lodge Phase Two. It's already designated and zoned for high-density residential. It allows for the number of stories that are being proposed. What we're really here tonight is to redesignate and rezone the lands that are being severed off their Lutheran church property, being added to this property, and that is to provide a secondary access into the property, as well as some landscaped area and some additional parking. So those are the comments I received at the time of submission of the report. I have, however, since that time, received additional report, additional comments. So I've been asked by all of the parties to read off the comments. So if I may, Your Worship, okay, thank you. I received, first letter received from Karen Remiak on behalf of the congregation of St. John's Lutheran Church. They said in their letter, "Our church home is the subject property which we recently sold to Menno Lodge with the intention that they continue to use the property in some fashion for the benefit of the community. Their primary business is providing affordable housing, and we are fully in support of the needed changes to the official plan and zoning bylaws that will allow them to proceed with their expansion plans." Next letter I received was from Judy Wubs, resident at 23 Holland Ave. Says here, "Knew this was going to happen, but it breaks my heart to lose the green space. Cried when all the trees came down. Few concerns. How many levels is the apartment building? Will our property lose its value? Will a cosmetically appealing fence be erected before construction at the owner's expense? Living here nine years Saturday and our taxes skyrocketing breaks my heart to be feeling that property we fell in love with is diminishing by leaps and bounds." Next letter I received to council from Jacob Sanger, resident of 32 Caverly Road. "Upon reviewing the proposed development plans, my immediate reaction was one of disbelief. I remain sincerely concerned that placing a three-story apartment building directly behind the backyards of homes in three separate residential streets is not in the best interests of this neighborhood or the Town of Elmer as a whole. While I recognize that growth and housing diversification are part of Elmer's future, the scale and placement of this particular project are not compatible with the character of the area. Elmer is not a community defined by mid-rise apartment buildings placed tightly among single-family homes. We are not running out of space to expand. In fact, the town is already growing outward in several directions. It is therefore difficult to understand why a development of this size must be situated within a well-established residential neighborhood rather than an area more suitable for higher-density housing. None of the recent high-density developments in our town have been placed in such a disruptive location for existing residents. If this proposal were for a one-story extension similar to the existing Menno Lodge residence, I would not be here objecting. Instead, the current plan represents a significant change to the appearance, character, and livability of our neighborhood, one that homeowners did not anticipate when making substantial financial investments in their properties. Many families purchase homes here specifically for privacy, a peaceful setting, and a long-term place to raise their children. This development threatens those expectations. Residents who envision this as their forever home are now questioning whether they will have to leave to preserve their quality of life. With that in mind, it is important to recognize the financial impact this project will impose on the families who already live here. A three-story building overlooking our backyards will inevitably reduce the market value of the surrounding homes. Buyers do not seek out properties overshadowed by large apartment structures, nor do they pay premium prices for homes that have lost their privacy and peaceful surroundings. Many of us have invested years of hard work and significant financial resources into these properties. Our savings, our equity, and our stability are tied to them. This development places that investment at risk. It is difficult for homeowners to accept that their hard-earned money and long-term planning may be undermined by a project that does not reflect the character and needs of this neighborhood. In addition to these concerns is the increase of traffic along Caverly. Caverly Road is already notorious for speeding as drivers attempt to reach the nearby intersection before the light turns red. This intersection is difficult and at times unsafe for pedestrians to cross. Adding traffic from 46 new units will only increase the risk for residents who use this route daily. May I also note my shock of a proposed entryway being put along the fence line of our backyard, and how extremely disruptive that is to not only us but the existing Menno Lodge residents. While I understand the financial advantages the development may offer the proponent, community planning must consider more than economic return. Elmer's charm and appeal are rooted in its small-town character and the respect shown between neighbors and neighborhoods. The question we must ask is not only whether we can build this structure here, but whether we should. I respectfully urge the council and developers to reconsider this plan. Either a different location should be selected, or the project should be redesigned as a one-story development that aligns with the established character of the neighborhood. Doing so would meet the needs of housing expansion without compromising the identity, safety, and well-being of the families who already call this area home. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration." Moving on to the next letter. Excuse me, sorry, from Kristin Sanger, 32 Caverly Row. "I am writing to formally express my strong opposition to the proposed development of a three-story residential building situated behind homes on Talbot Street, Holland Ave, and Caverly Road. This proposal, which seeks to sever an area and rezone it from low-density residential to high-density, represents a fundamental and deeply concerning change to the character and quality of our established neighborhood. Our neighborhood was designed as a low-density residential area, providing families with privacy and safety. The proposed three-story development would have a direct and negative impact on these values in several key ways. One, loss of privacy. The height and scale of the proposed building will significantly overlook the backyards and living spaces of homes on all three surrounding streets. Residents who have long enjoyed the privacy of their properties will now have multiple units facing directly into their yards and windows. This is an unacceptable invasion of privacy that will permanently alter the comfort and enjoyment of our homes. Number two, increased traffic and safety concerns. The intersections and streets surrounding the proposed site are already heavily trafficked, particularly during peak hours. Introducing a high-density building will bring dozens of additional vehicles, further congesting these roads, imposing new safety risks for pedestrians, for children, pedestrians, and cyclists in the neighborhood. Third, impact on property values. The introduction of a three-story, high-density building in such close proximity to single-family homes will have a profound impact on property values. Potential homebuyers are less likely to invest in properties overshadowed by a large, multi-level complex that comprises both privacy and neighborhood character. This would undoubtedly reduce the resale value of our homes and discourage future investment in the area. This has real financial consequences for families who invested their savings into purchasing and maintaining their homes in a peaceful, low-density community. The proposed rezoning from low-density to high-density is inconsistent with the original planning intent of this neighborhood and does not reflect the preferences or best interests of this neighborhood and community. The Town of Elmer has four pillars they follow. The third pillar states that the town should promote diverse housing options and to share how good life is in Elmer. We already have diverse housing behind us with the current Menno Lodge building. This proposed building may allow more people to enjoy life in Elmer, but in doing so ruin the enjoyment for the community or for the people who have already invested in this town. So may I suggest that instead this be a continuation of the current building and remain a one-story residence rather than three. I believe this would please all parties involved and hold true to the current plan that Elmer has for this space. I strongly urge the Planning Department and council to reject this zoning change and preserve the established character, privacy, and safety of our community by keeping this zone as low-density." Next letter from Abby and Brad Amato, 36 Caverly Road. "My husband and I are writing to formally register our strong objection to the proposed three-story residential development behind the existing homes on Talbot Street, Holland Ave, and Caverly Road. We wish to state that we echo the same concerns and feelings expressed by our neighbors who oppose this amendment. The request to sever this land and rezone it from low-density to high-density residential represents a major departure from the longstanding character, intent, and functioning of our neighborhood. Our community was intentionally designed as a low-density residential area, providing residents with privacy, stability, and safety. The proposed development would directly undermine these qualities in several significant ways shared previously: adverse impact on privacy, increased traffic and safety issues, and negative effect on property values. The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the original planning intentions for this area, does not reflect the best interests or preferences of the neighborhood, especially for young, growing families like ours and our neighbors. Our homes were intended upon being our forever homes, and this proposal absolutely calls that into question. While the town's pillars emphasize the importance of diverse housing and sharing the quality of life in Elmer, our neighborhood already includes diverse housing through the existing Menno Lodge facility. For these reasons, my husband and I strongly urge the Planning Department and council to reject this zoning amendment and preserve the established character, privacy, and safety of our community by keeping the area zoned as low-density residential." Next letter I received from Bruce and Melissa Prezant, who reside at 29 Holland Ave, and their backyard is right against the new planned building. "We respectfully ask that the plan for a three-story building to be denied approval. We understand the need to build a larger retirement home. The initial letter that we received from Menno Lodge said it would be a one-story building. This we could understand. However, this is the first time we received letters stating it was a three-story building that overlooks our backyard. The scale and density of the building isn't compatible with the neighborhood. We haven't, to our knowledge, seen a three-story building sandwich in between residential backyards in Elmer. This takes away any privacy to our home. A three-story building will result in a loss of vitality on our street. We currently have this close-knit group of families on our street with young children. We feel this will completely change the dynamics with a three-story building looming over our backyards. Truthfully, we feel this space would be more useful as a park or something in that capacity. That being said, we do understand the need for more retirement, long-term care homes. We request that the building remain a one-story building." That is the last letter. So if I may, I'll just kind of get into conclusion here. So it's the planning staff's opinion that the proposed local official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment are consistent with the policies of the provincial policy statement and conform to the county's official plan. In my report, at the time at which I wrote this report, recommending that the official plan amendment be adopted, zoning bylaw amendment be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. You could have stopped and taken a drink of water throughout that. Realize a lot of, a lot of reading. Thank you. Item four on this, is the, is the applicant or agent present? So, do you wish to speak to the application? If you do, please approach the mic and give your name.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Barabo, and thank you, Your Worship and councillors, for considering this application. So, and also thank you, Heather, for your hard work and for outlining this so, so clearly here. So my name is Jacob Barabo. I'm the project manager and client representative for the Menno Lodge Phase Two project. I am presenting this application on behalf of the board and the rest of the team at the Menno Lodge, some of whom are here today. So before I jump into who the Menno Lodge is and what this project looks like, as Heather's already outlined, I wanted to start presenting a fundamental problem we face today in society, and that is affordable housing. Affordable housing is a known and growing concern in Elgin County and will likely require slow, thoughtful, and long-term solutions. But providing affordable and dignified seniors' living is an immediate concern. As the silent generation's moving towards palliative care and the baby boomer generation continues to age, this is an issue that we all play a part in solving, and frankly, there's not much time to wait. The number of Canadians who will reach 100 years old has increased nearly 250% in the past 23 years. That's stats directly from Stats Canada, and that non-bias data should remain in our forefronts as we're considering these applications. In terms of the background, since, who is the Menno Lodge? The Menno Lodge, since 1988, has operated in Elmer as a non-for-profit organization. They are led by four local churches, and the board is commissioned to minister to the poor by providing affordable housing. Traditionally, the Menno Lodge has provided deeply affordable units with rental rates currently as low as, as low as $300 a month, right? 57% of their rental revenue has come from geared-to-income tenants, and 85% of their current tenants are widows. The Menno Lodge has operated via a volunteer board of directors since its existence, and the Menno Lodge is funded by rent, donations, and community partnerships. Their mission is to create, sustain, and sustain affordable housing opportunities for the aging population in Elgin County, fostering vibrant communities where everyone can thrive. And through collaboration, advocacy, and innovative development, the Menno Lodge aims to address housing needs and promote stability and dignity for their tenants. Terms of community need, for many years, the Menno Lodge has foreseen the need for more affordable housing increase. And in 2024, the property manager was commissioned by her board to expand their impact as a way to help meet that need. And it's been just over a year since that decision was made, and plenty of work and investment has gone into getting this here. The Menno Lodge has acquired 448 Talbot Street from the St. John's Lutheran Church and has been moving their way through the development process. Terms of the project details, Heather has already announced or outlined those, and you would have received that in your package, but it is a new 46-unit seniors' citizens' apartments, not just an apartment building. It's focused on senior citizens. This project is only possible through government funding programs at all levels. As a project, we must meet the criteria set out by each level of government. The facility will include a common hall for events, family visits, community dinners, and socializing, and its intent is to offer optional age-in-place services, such as laundry, cleaning, and meals. The building will be fully accessible and will be 25% more energy-efficient than the National Building Code requirements. Financing is, of course, the biggest hurdle. To keep rental rates affordable, we are doing everything we can to keep construction's costs affordable. We also create partnerships and find funding partners. Who have we partnered with so far? Well, the Elgin-St. Thomas Community Foundation has provided generous loan support for this project. CMHC has provided seed funding. The St. John's Lutheran Church has sold us their property and demonstrated their full support for this development. Local staff has supported this application and our efforts. Sub-trades and local businesses have supported this effort in very meaningful ways already, and will continue to do so through construction should it proceed. Frankly, each dollar saved through the cost of this development goes directly back towards affording, providing affordable living for seniors. And this is the base reason why I encourage councillors to pass this zoning application as submitted. In terms of the technical concerns, myself, the Menno Lodge, and the entire board behind this proposal are sensitive to the nature of change that this will bring. So with that, I will briefly speak to some of the concerns that were raised. One of the concerns that was raised was location. Residents are concerned with the size and location of the proposed development. Some felt that this application wasn't in keeping with the intent of the neighborhood. Some residents are concerned about privacy, and they don't want it in their own backyard. My response, our response to that, those initial concerns are of understanding. Change is hard, and change is, is coming. The residents have been blessed with a beautiful and extended backyard that they've been able to enjoy for years, and the loss for those individuals is unfortunate. However, the land was never theirs to begin with, and the current longstanding zone has permitted a multi-story development for many, many years. Menno Lodge took this into consideration when they were determining the size, shape, and scale of this development. The height of this development is proposed to be approximately 10 meters. Our current zoning allows for a height up to 22 meters, which equates to six, perhaps seven-story building. And the Menno Lodge has striven to strike a balance between honoring their mission, keeping rents affordable, and providing a development that is in keeping with the neighborhood. That's potential issue number one. The potential law- That's potential issue number one. The potential loss of property value. Some residents are concerned about perceived loss of property, and to this, I can't speak towards how great that loss would be, if it's temporary or long-term, but densification is good planning and improves the efficiency of sil- of city services. Planners have a choice to make: development, development of more farmland, or be more efficient with the land we already have. And the Menno Lodge's intent to be good neighbors, um, that is their intent, but the fact remains we do need more homes. And this, in addition to this point, I argue that placing of the seniors apartment in the middle of a neighborhood is in fact good planning. Not only does it increase the dignity and vitality by our tenants being close to active people, it also places them within walking distance of the downtown core. You place this apartment on the outskirts of town, residents won't be able to walk, won't be in walking distance or use the downtown services or stores as nearly as much. This location helps with the vitality, um, and viability of downtown businesses. Third concern was increased traffic. And to this, I have two responses. Yes, an increase in traffic will take place as a result of this development. And knowing this, as Heather outlined, we completed a traffic study for staff to review. Caverly Road was determined to be inadequately equipped to handle the increase in traffic. Number two, we explored entering this new development through South Street. If we were forced to enter through Strouts, South Street, tenants would have to drive deeper into the neighborhood, adding additional intersection to navigate and a deeper driveway. Entering off Caverly Street, from a planning perspective, is an objectively better solution, which is why we acquired the land and are making this proposal. Another concern was the driveway connecting the original, connecting the original Menno Lodge and the new Menno Lodge building. Um, it's not reflected in our current plans, but it is our intent to provide traffic control measures to keep speeds greatly reduced. I'm talking about speed bumps or speed signs. Um, and its primary purpose really is for a fire route, right? Now, the fire chief and us discussed this. It provides much better, much safer fire access to the building if we connect the two lots rather than providing a three-point turn or turnaround. Other reasons, uh, I believe it should be approved is, again, firefighting access will be greatly approved, uh, improved as opposed to coming off Second Street, um, and thereby traffic will be decreased, uh, services will be more direct, and the planning application will be more straightforward. Lastly, I will reiterate the current zoning of the RM2 permits us to provide a development up to 22 meters. We are only doing a 10-meter development. So with that, those are my, uh, those are my comments, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Baraboe. Excuse me. Um, would, are there any members of the public who wish to speak? If so, uh, please approach the mic and give
Thank you, your worship and council, for taking the time and the invite to be here tonight. As the town of Elmer continues to grow in population, I believe council should continue to monitor closely and make the necessary changes to make, manage the movement of vehicle traffic. With the approval of the proposed official plan, amendment and zone by law amendment for 2, 215 South Street West, Elmer, the volume of traffic will undoubtedly increase considerably, especially within the adjacent neighborhoods of the proposed amendments. My wife and I have been full-time residents on Caverly Road, and I should say my name is Brian Steele, and we reside on number three, number seven, Caverly Road, which is the third house in from the lakes. Within the last few years, we've observed a noticeable increase of vehicle traffic on Caverly Road. Now I wish to address a few of our concerns regarding the said amendments. Number one, traffic control. The construction of 46 new dwelling units will generate increased traffic volume for, for Caverly Road. Current traffic volume traveling northward on Caverly Road to the stoplight on Talbot Street West is such that the first three private driveways, myself included, from Talbot Street West onto Caverly Road, on many occasions, we have our private driveways blocked by traffic traveling northward due to many vehicles stopped waiting for the traffic lights to change from red to green. The end result is that we, as residents, are unable to enter or exit our driveways in a timely manner. Number two, as so indicated by the handout map, the proposed traffic to the 45 dwelling units, three-story building, would be using a two-way street to access the building. Such vehicle traffic could consist, could consist of service vehicles, wholesale delivery, staff, or visitors to the residence. It would appear that vehicle traffic could enter or exit Caverly Road. The map would also suggest that the side street identified for this traffic would be two-way. Allowing two-way traffic on this side street, we believe, would create traffic congestion, especially entering or exit, exiting Caverly Road. That being a safety concern, the traffic light at Caverly Street West, at Talbot Street West, sorry, and Caverly Road has no advanced green options for traffic movement. The lack, therefore, will continue to generate additional traffic congestion, driver frustration, and safety concern for pedestrians using the sidewalk. Our suggestions would be for traffic control. To help reduce the blockage of private driveways for either exiting or entering purposes, we would suggest that all traffic's light, that all traffic wishing to enter 215 South Street West do so only from Caverly Road and exit only onto South Street. This suggestion would direct all traffic, all vehicle traffic using the side street to 215 South Street West, travel in a one direction only. Therefore, they would be exiting on South Street, entering on Caverly. In summary, we would suggest that the traffic light at the junction of Caverly Road in Talbot Street West be revisited to include advanced greening turn, advanced green turning signals for vehicles traveling westbound from Talbot Street West. Currently, there are no advanced green notices on those stoplights, and there hasn't been since they've been installed, to my knowledge. I've been, currently, I've been forced to wait at the lights for several minutes or more, and then one, before one light changed due to vehicle volume traffic traveling eastbound on Talbot Street West. Also, we would suggest that vehicles traveling north on Caverly Road wishing to turn west onto Talbot Street be given an advanced green light. Creating advanced green lights at this intersection would help with the flow of traffic, thereby reducing some of the vehicle congestion and driver frustration during light changes. At times, I have been involved in a lineup coming from the east on Talbot Street West, going westward, and I want to turn at the lights to come down Caverly, and I've counted over 30 cars backed up as far as Holland Ave or past. So I have to wait some time for two to three lights to get through, and I expect traffic will be much heavier once the, uh, if this amendment is approved. Thank you very much for your
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
We, we have an online participant, Mr. Jim Richards, who'd like to speak.
Okay, um, Mr. Richards.
Thank you, your worship. Can you hear me okay?
I think so. Everybody nodding their head, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, your worship and council, uh, Jacob from the Menno Lodge for this meeting. I have a few questions, um, and a couple of suggestions. First of all, with respect to the previous speaker's advanced green suggestions, uh, wholeheartedly support. Uh, I retired to this community 18 months ago, and by the way, you folks have a lovely town, absolutely a lovely town. Uh, I came from a city that invented the advanced greens, namely the city of Hamilton, and they work, and I can't understand why there isn't an advanced green when you're turning left onto Caverly from Talbot. I, I don't understand that. Uh, it should be there. And in addition to that, with respect to the speak, previous speaker's, uh, suggestion of one-way traffic moving south along the Menno Lodge property, so entering into Caverly and exiting south one-way, I think that's a good idea. Again, um, a lot of one-way streets in Hamilton. Um, one question I have, and I am not intending to ask this question to be offensive, but I am new to the community. The, uh, project manager, his first name's Jacob, I didn't catch his last name, mentioned that this was geared-to-income housing for the community. Uh, he mentioned that it was municipally funded, provincially funded, federally funded, so taxpayers at all three levels. Is the Menno Lodge, and I don't know the answer to this question, is the Menno Lodge for Mennonite persons or persons that identify as Mennonites only, or is it open to everyone in the community? I would like the answer to that question because I don't
Mr. Baraboe, I think that's an important question, so maybe just give a quick yes-or-no answer.
It is for all communities, not Menno Lodge specific. It's a name that's been a part of it since 1988, and perhaps a rebrand may be coming, but, uh, no, it's for everybody.
Well, I greatly appreciate that answer. Um, it's, again, as a newcomer to the town of Elmer, there's been a lot of new things presented to my family and I, all welcome, of course. Um, I live at 50 Caverly, which is on the, um, southwest corner of Caverly and South, no, northwest corner of Caverly and South. So my property line is aligned with the, uh, original parking and the original entrance to the Menno Lodge off of South. Will there be any encroachment onto my cedars or my fence that I recently installed?
Okay, I'm going, and just to, uh, just to hurry up the, the presentation here, um, we, we accept your presentation to council, but I'll wait till the end and to give the, uh, the manager of planning a chance to answer some of those questions, okay?
Okay. I have one other question regarding lighting, and I'll certainly wait till the end for that, too. Thank you very much, your worship.
Okay. Do we have somebody else? Uh, I thought I saw someone come up. Thank you.
Karen White, and I live on Holland Ave, and actually, it's, um, just a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I wondered how far, far north of the present building would the proposed building be? Whether it would connect to the present one there?
No connection.
No, okay. And second, uh, question or confirmation that I would like is that there will be no traffic flow on the west side of the present, uh, building, um, that backs off of Holland?
No traffic.
No, that will never happen?
There's no space?
No, I didn't think so, but I just wanted confirmation on that. Okay, that's it.
I'll sit down after.
Okay, do we have any other presentations? All right. Seeing none, um, have you received any other communications? Have the clerk received any other communications?
Uh, all communications received have been provided to council at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, the manager of planning and development, sorry, did I miss somebody? Did you have another question, Mr. Richards, I guess?
Yes, your worship. I'm very sorry to take this much time. Uh, my last question is more of a suggestion. At nighttime, the current Menno Lodge, Menno Lodge, Lodge, sorry, um, lighting in their parking lot. I can go out at four o'clock in the morning and read a book with that lighting. Could I suggest that some consideration be taken, uh, to reduce the impact of the lighting of not only the current parking, but the future parking, and some kind of a shroud be put on part of the light or a directional light so that it's not, um, causing light pollution into the backyards of all the homes that are going to be impacted? That would be my last comment and suggestion, and I thank, uh, your worship and council for the time.
All right. Thank you very much for those questions. Um, I see staff is noting those, so I'm sure that, uh, we'll be thinking about those questions that you've asked. And I've forgotten the second question that you asked, and I deferred it to, uh, to the manager of planning until the end. Did you have a, an answer to that question, Heather?
Yes. So Mr. Richards and I have spoken on the phone, um, and discussed the cedars. Um, it's my understanding those cedars are solely on your property, Mr. Richards. Is that correct?
That's what I am led to believe based on the, uh, survey I was provided by my lawyer for the property. I just wanted confirmation, and you had suggested, Heather, to come to this meeting to ask the project manager specifically that question.
So Mr. Baraboe is here. He may be able to speak to that. I, I can say that, yes, um, if those cedars belong solely on your property, um, they would not be disrupted as part of this development. Um, there is no development focused on this end of the Menno Lodge property. Um, it's all being focused north of the existing building, um, but Mr. Baraboe can speak further to that. Regarding the lighting, um, yes, you, as you saw, your worship, uh, staff were, uh, right, making notes. Um, we will definitely keep that in consideration. Um, we do, um, with site plan approval, we require buildings to have lighting directing down on the properties, not directing out, um, and we check to make certain that there isn't, uh, light pollution for the neighbors. Um, I'm wondering if Terry can maybe speak to if we have the ability to do any controls on existing lighting because the existing Menno Lodge building would not be subject to site plan approval.
Um, it's something that we could look at. Um, with the lighting design, it should show the existing lighting as well, so I'm, I'm sure with the design of the proposed lighting, um, they could show some of the, the lighting that's currently in place and possibly look at, uh, either matching or putting some, some, uh, shrouds on the lights.
Thank you, sir. Before we forget, Mr. Baraboe was gonna, was gonna comment on the, the second question.
Yeah, quickly regarding the property line, we did do a legal survey, and, um, basically short answer is if your, if your fence is on the property line, no, we will not be encroaching upon it. And there was nothing that was identified in our review when we reviewed the legal survey of any sort of encroachment needed. Uh, that south end of the driveway, the current existing driveway off 215 South Street, uh, won't be having significant change, um, at that part of the property there.
If I may, the fence was put on, uh, two feet into my property line, uh, so the cedars are my property line.
Fantastic. Sir, I didn't study your corner very detailed, but if you'd like to reach out afterwards, I can, I can communicate with you further offline about this.
Can, can I get your information from Heather then at a later time?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from, uh, the public? All right. Um, I'll turn over the discussion to council. If council has any questions before we move out of committee. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Uh, thank you, worship. To, uh, Mr. Bartle, um, I think the light standards or the light shrouds are an excellent, uh, suggestion, and I'm sure you'll follow that one up. In the existing, uh, Menno Lodge, is there an age, um, limitation of 60, or an age, uh, minimum of 65? And would that, if that's true, will it carry through into the, the new building?
Uh, currently, we are exploring expanding that to 55-plus. Um, there is the potential of expanding one or two, uh, younger families into the Menno Lodge for the purpose of providing vitality, diversity in that building. There's some discussion about whether or not, uh, what the right mix is, but it would, focus is 55-plus.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up, uh, your worship?
Okay.
Uh, the advanced green that, uh, uh, Caverly and Talbot makes a lot of sense. I get stuck in that one regularly. It's not unusual to wait three or four lights to get through, and if possible, with the MTO consent, uh, that should be looked at, no matter what the status of this project goes. Um, and a question to Heather, if I may. Um, Heather, the, uh, zoning that's in place at the present time, for all intents and purposes, is appropriate for the scale of the development. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. So the existing Menno Lodge lands, which is where the proposed Menno Lodge second building will be, uh, constructed on, is zoned for this, uh, proposed use.
Okay, and just a follow-up to that. The access to Caverly Road, um, makes for the project to be much more viable. Is that correct? Is that correct?
It just provides secondary access to the property, provides better traffic flow, also provides as well servicing connections off of Caverly as opposed to having to run a separate servicing easement up from South Street West into the second building.
Thank you.
Counselor Roy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments. I can understand the concerns from everyone that lives there because no one wants anything in their backyard, especially when they have what they have right now, which is nothing. But I do also understand the needs of what we need. And, you know, housing is, it's on the top of the list. Unfortunately, there isn't anything better, or there isn't anything easier than filling it in. And I do agree with a lot of the stuff that was said as far as maybe the one way, using it one way to help leave eat some traffic. And, you know, an advanced green light, which probably should happen anyways because I get stuck in that picking kids up from daycare. So that being said, I, it's kind of a tough one because, you know, ideally, we build it somewhere where there's new building going on, so there is no change. But also having an agriculture background, if we can use that space up, I'd rather use that than more farmland. So it's not really an easy decision, and I understand both sides. And I hope that the Menno Lodge does it respectfully or as respectfully as they can. And they seem to have been putting as much thought into it as they can, and I hope they do that going forward. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Oslak.
Mr. Mayor, I would prefer one-story, one-story unit on this site to match the surrounding houses.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor DeRosie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to acknowledge some of the concerns that were raised by residents regarding this proposal. The addition, in addition to those who have submitted written objections and are here tonight, several more have reached out directly. There appears to be two common concerns between everyone that I've spoken to. The first being mainly is the size. Everyone seems to be in agreeance that more housing is necessary. It's more so just the height that is the concern. We've heard from Mr. Barbo tonight. I think he's made a lot of good points about this development, and I appreciate the time that he's taken to be here and address those concerns from residents directly. The second that was raised unanimously was that none of the residents received notice from the town prior to the initial October 1st planning discussion. They all advised that they became aware of this proposal after the county issued notification at a later stage. This has left them feeling excluded from the process. So the question I have for staff is whether or not they can clarify what the obligations are for a planning matter such as this, and if perhaps they were not met, where that breakdown could have occurred. Can, hoping staff can clarify that. Thank you.
Heather?
So, once an application is received, that is then a public document, okay? Severance is, the approval authority rests with Elgin County. Elgin County sends out all of the notifications under the Ontario Planning Act. For severances, the minimum circulation distance is only 60 meters to all subject to all surrounding lands. So unfortunately, I can't control what Elgin County did. Elgin County has their own legislative steps that they have to follow, okay? Residents receive notification of the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment, and that's all residents within 120 meters of the subject lands. That is how it's specified as a minimum within the Ontario Planning Act. We do not provide people information before applications are submitted because there is discussions that happen in preconsultation that are confidential between developers and between staff. Some of these applications, or some of these consultations, developments never occur. So once we have an application and there is a public meeting, notices are sent out.
Have a follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So just to confirm, the October 1st meeting that council had, I believe this was a planning matter, but if you could clarify, that'd be great. There was notice circulated then, or that was the responsibility of the county for the October 1st meeting, and something happened there?
So the October 1st meeting is an opportunity for council to provide comments to Land Division Committee, because Land Division Committee is the approval authority. We, because it's a consent where the approval authority rests with Elgin County, the town of Elmer Council is a commenting agency. So I provide a report to council, advising council of the application with a recommendation with a list of conditions. And you have an opportunity to review and decide whether you want to recommend support to Land Division Committee on that. The meeting that was held October 1st is not a public meeting. It is just a meeting to provide counsel with the severance proposal and for counsel to provide their comments to Land Division Committee.
One more follow-up, I promise. So just taking this as a learning experience, then, if this is how residents were felt from this, and we've already established that it was basically, it's the protocol of how this works. Like, moving forward, if council is receiving for a land acknowledgement committee or whatever that was called, can we defer it? Can council defer and ask for a public consultation before it's pushed through, or no?
I don't think so. Heather?
No, I just want to make certain it's clear. We are only a commenting agency to Elgin County, okay? They are the approval authority. They're just asking for council's comments. The public process happens with Elgin County. They send out the public meeting. The yellow sign that you saw posted on the property, which is the notice of public meeting, is posted on the property. We cannot, as Elmer, since we are not the approval authority, we cannot involve ourselves beyond what the approval authority requires of us.
So if I can summarize, but, basically, you're saying, Heather, that we notified the residents as soon as we possibly could. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor, Jamie Chambers.
Through you, Worship. This is for Mr. Barbo. I understand the desire to provide as many units as possible. Have you considered a two-story building that would create less invasion of the backyards of the residents who are so close?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Answer, yes, we considered single, two, six, five, four, three, multiple different stories. And what it comes down to is not only what is good for the neighborhood, but what is viable from a financial perspective. Someone mentioned that, you know, all level of governments, I mentioned all level of governments are involved, and that is true. CMHC is the primary funding agent for this. And they are looking for specific projects that meet a specific criteria. And in order to be attractive for successful approval of those funds, we needed to put forward an attractive proposal. And their priority is units, right? An amount of units and all sorts of different ratios. And we determined it was our best possible proposal was three stories, and that's what we proceeded with. So a lot of planning, a lot of logic, a lot of multiple balls in the air were considered when we put together this proposal, and this is what we've come to. And we firmly believe that this is the best compromise for all the different objectives that are going on.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments from council on the resolution to move out of committee?
That council do now close this public meeting at 7:58 p.m. and reconvene the meeting of council.
Mover in second, or Counselor Oslak and Counselor DeRosie? All in favor? That is carried. Now we need to consider action on this item. We're into regular council. Do we have a proposed resolution?
So the staff recommended resolution is that Report Plan 21-25 regarding the Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Official Plan Amendment 02-25 and Zoning Bylaw Amendment ZBA 03-25 be received, and that the council of the town of Elmer adopt the proposed official plan amendment, Application OPA 01-25 in accordance with the Bylaw 69-25, and forward the necessary documentation and bylaw to Elgin County for approval, and that the council of the town of Elmer approve the zoning bylaw amendment ZBA 01-25 in accordance with the zoning bylaw, with the Bylaw 70-25, and provide three readings to Bylaw 70-25.
Mover in second, or to get it on the table? Deputy Mayor Barber, have a second, or? Counselor Rahi? Okay, we do have the resolution on the floor. Counselor Oslak.
Could we have a recorded vote?
Yes, we could, when we get to the vote. I hope that there will be more discussion before we get there. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Worship. With the reading of the proposed resolution, I noted some of the numbers didn't jive. Was that just me, or is there a change from the document that we were provided? For instance, in the OPA, I believe you said 01-25 at the beginning? And our document says 02? Which is correct?
Your Worship, if I may speak to Deputy Mayor Barber. So the correct file numbers are OPA 02-25 and ZBA 03-25.
So the screenshot is wrong?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I call the vote, I just want to remind council that we do have some options. We have the option to approve. We have the option to reject. We have the option to defer and refer the application to a third party for, you know, kind of like a lawyer to tell us how, you know, whether this kind of application would be wise to approve or to reject? Because the next step, of course, is to go to, you know, the province to get approval. So do we, do you have some comments on that, Counselor Rahi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just, I have a quick question. Because the, where the proposed building is going is already zoned for up to 20 meters. So if we don't approve what we're talking about, that's just the accessway that goes out and some parking. But essentially, they can still build something back there, correct?
That's correct.
And another comment, and I understand, again, it's not an easy, it's not easy, but it makes sense to keep going up to a certain extent because you already, you already have your footings and your foundation, and you're just adding. So it does make sense. But, I mean, essentially, if we don't approve this portion of it, they could, they could just build this anyways. It's just not going to be as nice because they're going to try to cram all the crap in to the existing portion, correct?
That's the way I see it. Do you have a comment on that, Heather?
So should, so what you're basically saying is, so the severance has conditions, and those conditions are that the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment need to come into effect. So should council refuse the applications? Then those lands that are being severed off the Lutheran Church property wouldn't be severed off and added to this parcel? So what that means is that, yes, they could still build another building or build an addition to their existing building on their existing lands that are designated and zoned for the apartment, the higher story apartment use. Where they might run into troubles is meeting parking requirements, meeting lock coverage requirements. So they would probably have to, and again, I'd have to see something, but they would have to more than likely scale back the size of either the addition or the building they were building in order to comply with the zoning by law.
Okay. Anyone else that you have a comment?
If I may, through the mayor to council. If it was council's will to, if council is leaning towards rejecting this application, we would simply recommend a deferral so that we could seek out more information on either whether a rejection or an amendment would be possible. So we just wanted to offer that to council. If you're leaning towards either amending or rejecting this proposal, a deferral would be the preference of staff.
Counselor DeRosie?
I'll put forward a motion to defer.
Do we have a second, or?
I'll second it, yeah.
Counselor Chapman, there's a second, motion to defer. So that's on the floor right now. So do we have a, do you still wish a recorded vote, Counselor Oslak?
No.
No.
Through the mayor to council. If we go the route of a motion to defer, we would be looking for council direction on why we are doing that. So if council has concerns about the height of the unit, if that's the primary concern, and you want staff to seek a legal opinion on that, we would need to specify that in the resolution. I do have a resolution drafted, if council wished to hear it. Okay. So that resolution reads that council defer consideration of official plan amendment OPA 02-25 and zoning by law amendment ZBA 03-25, and that council direct staff to obtain an opinion on the town's ability to require or request an amendment to the proposal to limit the apartment building to two stories, and that council, and that staff report back to council on this meeting or on this matter at a future meeting, and that staff continue discussions with the applicant regarding the feasibility and implications, including any loss or unit availability of a revised one or two-story concept.
Does that kind of resolution meet with the mover in second for a deferral? Okay, so we'll use that as the resolution on the table at the moment. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing done, I will call the vote on the deferred, on the motion to defer along with the instructions to staff. All who's in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item. I think 5.13, 5.14, 5.2, sorry. We have a presentation by Kathy Vendermere, Elmer Malahide Museum and Archives.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you tonight. So I recently presented to the Elmer Finance Committee regarding our request for funding. As you are aware, we did request $30,000, but the recommended amount came in at $9,062.66 plus an additional $5,000 that was decided during the meeting. While we appreciate the extra funding, this is a significant reduction from the $25,000 that we received last year and does not take into consideration any recompense for property taxes on both of our buildings. Our expenses continue to increase each year, yet our funding from municipal and government sources have either stayed static or decreased. And I would like to address some comments that were made in the Finance Committee's communication. And this is a direct quote. "Elmer Malahide Museum and Archives. While the museum provides a valued cultural service, there are ongoing concerns about long-term financial sustainability and the absence of a clear business plan for the redevelopment of its new site." This is actually addressing two different subjects. The museum finances are divided into two distinct categories. The operation of the museum currently housed at 14 East Street and the relocation to the new building at 75 Talbot Street. Our grant request to the town is strictly for the operation of the museum, and the relocation project should not be taken into account during these deliberations. We do operate on a very tight budget. Our staff are paid an hourly wage that is barely above minimum. The funding that we receive from our municipalities and the government sources is equivalent to less than 24% of our operating budget. The remainder of that we raise ourselves through memberships, sponsorships, and fundraising. This revenue is directed towards the museum business only. There's a lot of talk, a lot of talk about our plan for relocation, and we'd like to clarify a few points. While we would love to be able to focus entirely on the relocation, we find ourselves in the position of needing to dedicate most of our resources to keeping our current doors open because we do not receive stable funding. We have a business plan for the relocation that we have provided to you- We have a business plan for, for the relocation that we have provided to you previously, though it does need to be reviewed to include the most recent developments. We have not only raised the funds to purchase the seventy-five Talbot Street property, we have raised an additional two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars towards the project. In the past two years, we have arranged for a building concession assessment, an environmental assessment, and destructive testing on the new building. We have just finalized the concept plans for the renovation. Our next step is a comprehensive cost analysis and then to start to solicit bids from qualified contractors. During this stage, we will begin to apply for our grants. The Ontario Trillion Foundation Grant intake begins this February. Canada Cultural Spaces Fund, open for applications at any time, as is, as is the Enabling Accessibility Fund. So we are moving forward with our relocation plans as quickly as we are able. It was also stated in the Finance Committee communication that we provide a valued cultural service. I want to point out that we also bring in visitors from all over southwestern Ontario. This past weekend was our annual Christmas tour of homes and we track our attendees, which numbered over eight-hundred-and-fifty attendees this year. Only forty percent of our visitors were from Elmer Malahide. The other sixty percent came from as far away as Niagara, Toronto, and Windsor. All of these visitors had the same comment, that our tour is one of the best around. They came to the area just to go on the tour and while they were here, they shopped in our local stores and they ate at our local restaurants. We provide a valuable service to the tourism of the town of Elmer in addition to the work that we do taking care of your collection. Also stated in the communication, and this is a quote again, "In both two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, Malahide Township's Grant Review Committee raised concerns about the AMA. Most recently, this committee commented that the committee encourages the museum to explore consideration of a model focused on events and exhibits, which could be scheduled periodically to engage the community while reducing overhead costs. Such an approach coupled with the volunteer involvement and streamlined operations could enhance financial sustainability while preserving and showcasing the collection effectively. Not only is this not feasible, but it does not take into consideration exactly how a museum operates. We have estimated that it will cost approximately fifteen thousand dollars just to install our next exhibit in March. Scheduling periodic exhibits would only increase our overhead costs, not decrease them. Each exhibit takes at least four weeks to plan and research, then two weeks to install. There are costs associated with consumables, printing, purchases, and advertising. Our expenses such as hydro, gas, security, telephone, internet, and insurance remain constant over the course of the year regardless of whether we are open to the public or not. Our volunteers logged two thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-five hours in two thousand and twenty-four. Our volunteers are amazing, but they are also limited in some of the work that needs to be done due to the amount of training and education required to actually work with the collection. It has been suggested that we sell the fourteen East Street building and move into seventy-five Talbot Street, Street location sooner. This, again, is not feasible. The seventy-five Talbot Street building has moisture and insect issues that must be dealt with before it is safe to store artifacts there. While we have managed a couple of short-term pop-up exhibits, long-term storage is not an option. The air quality is also very poor due to mold from the moisture issues. We have several volunteers who are unable to spend any time in the building because it does affect their breathing. The renovations planned will solve these problems and make it a safe space for employees, volunteers, visitors, and the collection. Added to that is the lack of accessibility. We can't open it before we have accessible washrooms or accessible, accessible entrance points. Our business plan allows for us to completely raise the funding for the renovation and then the proceeds from the sale of the fourteen East Street building will be used as needed for operating expenses during the first year of operation and all unused funds can then be invested to begin to build our savings again. In conclusion, we believe we should be considered an essential service and funded as such. We would like to request you consider adding us as an item to your annual budget at a set amount. This would ensure stable funding for the museum and help us to better manage our expenses. Thank you very much for your time tonight."
Thank you, Kathy. Counsel? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Your Worship. Leading up to Kathy's presentation, and it was well done, I had just made a note of some of the things that we had talked about, we being Counsel and the museum had talked about over time, and she touched on most of those. Bearing in mind that the criteria for funding into the future with the, the recent changes that we made, in one, capping out at twenty-five thousand dollars to any group and more for programming than operations will kick in for two thousand and twenty-six, I have a proposed resolution for Counsel's consideration that Counsel allocate an additional sum of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents from the Counsel Initiative reserves to the Elmer and Malahide Museum and Archives to provide, in addition to their Elmer Community Grant, a total of twenty-five thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a secondor? Counselor Ozlatch? Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, great. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Now we need a resolution to receive for information, Kathy Vandemir's presentation.
That the delegation from Kathy Vandemir from the Elmer Malahide Museum and Archives regarding two thousand and twenty-six community grants be received for information.
Mover and secondor, Counsel Rahi, Counsel Ozlatch? All those in favor? Carry. Thank you. Item five point three, we don't have five point three, we have item six, Consent Agenda. So we have a resolution?
That the consent agenda for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five be received for information and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted and that a letter, the letter from Forever Wildlife Rehabilitation be referred to staff for a report and that staff issue a letter of support on behalf of the, the Counsel for the Town of Elmer regarding the Yarmouth Yards industrial development and that Counsel approves the minutes of the regular meeting of Counsel held on November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Mover and secondor, Counsel Rahi, Counsel Derozier? Comments on any of those items? Counsel Chapman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak to item six point one point four. It was brought to my attention that I may have unintentionally caused offense when I spoke at the October fifteenth meeting. Please know this was never my intention. I mentioned comments from a delegation's only to highlight the importance of having an accessible library and sincerely regret that it came across in any other way. I reached out to the delegate personally as soon as I became aware of this concern in the days following the meeting. I have deep respect for our community and will never knowingly say or do anything that would make anyone feel unwhored or dismissed regardless of their background or their position on an issue. I want to offer my heartfelt apologies if my words caused any discomfort. I also understand that the decision to proceed with the new library build may not be welcomed by everyone, so I firmly believe it is the right path forward to ensure our library remains central, accessible, and able to serve children, seniors, and all community members well into the future.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, Worship. Six point one point six, the letter in support of the, the actions of the Elgin Area Primary Water Supply System. It was brought to my attention that, why was I reaching out to the, the media on this particular matter? And I'm not one to advocate for, for photo ops, but in my role as chairman of this particular committee, I thought that was a, a vital topic to bring to the attention of upper levels of government, including the, the city of Saint Thomas and obviously our MPPs. And in, in that regard, it has gone well. Several media sources approached me and we conducted interviews so we better understand both areas' positions. I have reached out to the mayor of Saint Thomas and to the mayor of London and, and to our MPP here, and we're on the same page. I spoke to the warden of Elgin County, although they don't have any direct input, virtually every one of the municipalities in Elgin County have a huge stake in this. Understanding that it's a four-hundred-million-dollar project, conceptually, that all of the municipalities, based on their share of water consumptions, have to absorb that debt should the plant expansion of the plant be necessary, and that won't be done until a water master plan is developed, which will commence as soon as possible. How that breaks down for the various communities, right now, the city of London pays fifty percent of the, of the, buys fifty percent of the water produced by the Dexter Line Plant. If that ratio changes, let's say that Elmer, sorry, that Saint Thomas is then at sixty percent and we are presently at ten percent, if the volume goes up a lot and we are responsible for five percent of four-hundred-million dollars, we don't have to pay that money, but it becomes our credit liability on our, for the municipality. Heather, if I may, what would an extra twenty million dollars of, of debt mean to the, the town of Elmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Any debt issued through the water system would be directly passed on to the user rates of the water users. So we would have to do a water financial plan to figure out how much the impact would be to absorb that amount. I'd be gravely concerned if that was passed on to our residents.
Okay, just to follow up that, just to make sure that everybody understands, we don't have any ability to accept or reject that debt. Does a twenty-million-dollar hit on our credit limit make any difference?
We wouldn't have to directly issue that debt, but through the financial statements of the Secondary Water Board, which we are owners of ninety-seven percent of, that would be substantial change on our balance sheet.
What would it mean?
I would be very concerned if that, if that was passed on to us. I, I don't even know what that would mean at this point. Twenty million dollars is substantial and for us, ninety-seven percent of twenty million is a serious problem.
Okay, just to kind of wrap it up, it's a very important topic for the community and that's not to minimize the, the very positive effect that PowerCo will make to the area in the number of jobs and in the number of growth that, in the amount of growth that Elmer could share in. So we need to get it right, but we need to do it without being on the backs of the local people. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a comment on that is that this is kind of getting blindsided by everybody, all of a sudden, people realize that we needed this four-hundred-million-dollar plant in order to service PowerCo. So I'm hoping that, you know, the meeting with Saint Thomas and the meeting with London, you're forming some kind of a lobby group with the province in terms of asking the province to pay for this because they're paying for the, the OPP station, for example, that is being set up, they're paying for a wastewater plant in Saint Thomas, they should be paying, paying for this four-hundred-million-dollar plant.
If I may, Mayor Preston and MPP Flack have both indicated that they have our support.
Okay, I hope it, you know, I hope they press the provincial government strongly. All right, any other comments on any of these items? I do have one brief comment. Were there any others before I give? Okay, I do have one brief comment on six point one point five, which is Forever Wild Rehabilitation, which is part of the resolution to, to have staff look at that. This is something that, that happened, that happens in the town of Elmer where you have animals that, for example, have distemper, especially raccoons in the town of Elmer, and this happened to me a couple of weeks ago, and it took me a long time to get anybody that would actually come and catch the animal because nobody will come and catch the animal. And then when you've caught the animal, no one will dispose of it. You know, you could call the police, which are very good, if you have an animal, and they will dispose of it, providing they can do so safely, but in a lot of cases, they can't do this safely. So once you've caught the animal, you need someplace for it to go to be disposed of and this particular organization is the only one in Elgin County that will provide some help. And just for background, it took a long time to, to, to find someone to do that. The raccoon in question was caught, I eventually trapped it and, and found a place to, through this organization, to dispose of it, but it's very dangerous, especially for canines, for dogs. Anyway, just my personal comment on that. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution? Thank you. I think we've been almost an hour and a half, so I want to take a five-minute break and take a recess. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We're at item seven, action item 7.1, Director of Financial Services Tax Rate Off Report Resolution.
That report, Finance 23-25, entitled Tax Rate Off Report 2025, be received for information, and that council acknowledge the changes to the 2025 tax rule as outlined in Schedule A, as the 2025 tax write-offs approved under the Municipal Act.
Moving on to secondary, Councilor Oslach and Councilor Chapman. I need to discuss, Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report council has in front of them this evening is a standard report that comes around every year after we've done all the write-offs. I'll explain some of these write-offs in the report, so council can, can understand each property. So, the first one is for the piece of property that a company, a small company owns, that no one can sell the property, it's a piece of property on Forest Street, nobody pays taxes on it, or it's so small that they can't build on it. So, prior council has asked that we write it off every year, which is included in this report. The 357 for Sidenham, the Cherry Street nonprofit owns it, they purchased it, and it flipped to exempt. So, they're, they meet the nonprofit criteria through MPAC, which is why they're exempt. So, there's also the failed tax sale on, for Elm Street, which we had provided for, as council is aware, last year with the surplus. So, we provided for 60,000 of this, so that will reverse out of reserves, so that will be covered. So, that was prudent, that council put that money away last year for this. We also have minutes of settlement for 31 Ann Street. So, through the RFR process, it flipped from multi-res to new multi-res. Prior to that, it flipped from condo to multi-res, so there's a write-off there. There's also a minute of settlement for 215 South Street. The Menno Lodge property is now tax exempt, so they threw, they put through an RFR through MPAC, so they're no longer taxable properties. So, the total right now is 147,000. I don't anticipate any more write-offs coming in before year-end. Everything should be keyed, but 60,000 of that was, has been accounted for through a prior provision.
Okay, thank you. Counsel. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. It was a good thing we provided for that, or you folks provided that $60,000. Good work.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor? There's Terry, thank you. 7.2, Director of Financial Services, something called the Mayor's Budget, have a resolution.
That report, Finance 22-25, respecting the mayor's final budget for 2026, be received for information, and that council acknowledge the proposed final budget from the mayor for 2026 as presented.
Moving on to secondary, Deputy Mayor Barber, Colin Bateman. Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you into members of council. With the report you have in front of you this evening, it represents the mayor's final budget. We've had lots of feedback from the public and the budget survey, the deputy mayor and mayor's town hall, several delegations to council, lots of collaborative discussion, which I think was great, through the mayor delegating that responsibility back to Finance Committee, and then, of course, the debate throughout the Finance Committee. So, finally, with the mayor's final direction, the estimated tax impact with the latest key data from MPAC is just under 3%. I have to wait until the first week in December to see the final assessment, but my prediction is going to be around 2.9% for the tax rate impact. So, this was one of the many successful outcomes of this council, they can celebrate, you know, you had to make a lot of tough decisions throughout this budget process, working through some unexpected challenges throughout this term also. So, this council started with this term with many competing factors, such as minimal growth, catching up on capital investment that was close to nil in the last few years, also being able to mitigate some of these challenges by working together and approving the budgets earlier. Terry and the team are able to get the tenders out earlier and issued ahead of the rest of the county, so everybody's kind of jealous of us right now, that we've had all our discussions on the capital side and on the operating side, and it will greatly benefit the tender outcomes for our large capital investments. So, the changes from the last budget discussion include truing up the grants and donations for HGL based on the approval from last meeting, updating the latest Catfish Creek Authority prediction, finalizing CPP maximums and WMP maximums for Omer's, pulling through the final labor values for Parks and Rec's culture position that council just approved, updating the new OSIF number and the new OMPF number that was previously withheld from a communication ban temporarily from the ministry, and then receiving the latest MPAC forecast that literally came the day that the mayor had made the announcement last week. So, I want to address a few comments also, just kind of floating around there. So, people wonder why we can't use building permit fees to offset the levy. They're required to offset the Building Department only, so we have this great, you know, boom in industry, we have a lot of building permit revenue, but that is essentially, the surplus in that area will be transferred to reserves prior to year-end. The idea with the Building Department is obligatory reserve, and it's treed up every year after year-end. Also, a couple councils, a couple questions came up through council, which I thank, and we provided a memo in the agenda, so hopefully that has, hopefully council has been able to review that, and if anybody has any other questions, I'll try to address any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Just a comment I have, I mean, this is kind of new to me, because it says the mayor's budget, but in all reality, this budget was formed 95% by council and by a whole lot of other factors that Heather mentioned, so it should really say council budget, but nevertheless, we, provincially, we have to call it the mayor's budget. So, just want to mention that, and also that, you know, the budget was developed over a long period, and it considered not only what is necessary now, but what's necessary for the future, for future capital and future income, and carefully, it's carefully crafted, if I may use it word, to stabilize the levy, I think, over many years, because we're thinking not just about this year, but we're thinking about years to come. And as I've already stated, I, that I would like next council to keep tax rates below 5%, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that that kind of thing happens. And this budget is a responsible and responsive document, which is taking into consideration a number of different things, so. We, if you look at the budgets so far, in this term of council, they've, they're all kind of below 5%, except for the first one, which is just over 5%. So, we've done a really great job, council, in keeping our tax rates within a very responsible range, so. Leave it at that. Comments from council? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. Just to reiterate your comments regarding the input from the Finance Committee, which is in fact council, I just want to thank each and individual, each and every member of that committee for their work over the period of time. Really appreciate it, and the results show your efforts.
Anyone else? Councilor Oslach?
Mr. Mayor, to Heather, the tax rate is under 3%. Could you give me an estimate on the average house increase on a yearly basis would be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The average house is assessed at 214,000, that's the mark that we use, so an average of just under $60 for each household at that assessment, which equates to just under $5 a month for each resident.
Anyone else? Councilor Rahim?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Heather. What was the, what was inflation last year, percent-wise? Was it in the twos? Two-point?
I don't recall the exact number, but it was, I think it was under 5%.
Under 5, okay. It's fantastic to have a low increase, it's just if we have, you know, a 2.5 or a 3% increase in inflation, would that not mean everything costs, you know, 3% more? So, we're, I mean, it's always nice to have, you know, no tax increase or zero, but at some point, you do have to have over what the inflationary increase was, so that we were actually gaining something, because that is what we're kind of out to do, right? So, so it being low is fantastic, but I don't know how you try to keep it at 3% for a long, long time and not gain anything out of it, so how does that work?
Well, how does that work is a great question. I think it works because we take a look at what we have as we move along. The projections are based on, I guess, projections in terms of revenue that we're going to have, and it's a matter of using money that we have in reserves for certain things, and using money, that, using things that we don't do, right? So, I can't answer that question, I can't answer a question for tomorrow, but all I'm going to say is that, you know, it can happen. I can recall back in 2010, when I was first mayor, that Elmer had a debt of $5.2 million, and this is 2010, and we managed to pay that off in four years, and the, we took every year as it came. I don't have a good, good answer to how do you ensure that, but I ensure it, because we will take a look at the numbers, and we will do what we have to do in terms of making that happen, that's all I can say. Councilor De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification from the treasurer here. In her report, she's put forward that MPAC assessments are projected to come back, I believe increased. Do we have, I guess, I think I said early figures, do we have an idea of what those MPAC assessment projections are at this time?
Through the mayor to Councilor De Rosier. Good question. That's the amount that we forecasted to come out of stabilization, so right now, I can't publicly say the forecasted number, but we were able to take 250,000 out of stabilization, which equates to 3.1 tax points out of stabilization based on the growth forecast.
So, just to clarify then, the estimate that you provided, Member Oslach, was for the average household assessment value, which my own personal taxes actually fall within that figure of 214,000. So, I guess what I'm looking for is a little bit of clarity. If my assessment was to increase by, let's say, 2%, that average assessment is now 218,280, correct?
Not necessarily. The average assessment calculation that we're using right now is based on the Q2 forecast. So, your average assessment may not increase based on inflation, these average assessment numbers are based on 2016 values. Does that make sense?
Those are MPAC values for 2016.
Correct. We're using MPAC assessed, average assessed values.
So, just another point of clarity, when residents receive their tax bills for this upcoming year, are you suggesting that that assessment value is staying the same then, and then we're also having that 3% increase on top?
So, the assessed val, okay, I'm going to try to answer your question properly, through the mayor. The assessed value will change if you have an assessment change, so if you have building permit changes, if MPAC reassesses your property, they send out the assessment notices. So, if your specific house will change, I don't know what each specific house is going to change by, but currently, we're using, from simple math, average MPAC assessment at 214,000 equates to just under $60. So, if your average assessment on your MPAC notice goes up by $4,000, you can add 2.79 or 9%, 2.9% to that tax bill. For the municipal portion, we still are waiting for the county. Does that make sense?
Yes, it absolutely does, that's perfect. So, we don't know if every resident is going to be experiencing that though, right?
Through the mayor again, I don't, I guess I wasn't clear, but it's, it's based on your MPAC assessment. So, I don't know if MPAC's going to send out assessment notices to every single resident in the town of Elmer, but right now, we're talking average assessed rates at 214,000. This is what the average impact is. Does that make it clear?
Perfect.
As to me. And, you know, your assessment hasn't changed since 2016. MPAC has not changed it, it's time they did, but the 2%, 2.9% is related to what you paid last year in taxes, not related to the assessment. Any questions? Any other comments, rather? You have one more.
I do, it's unrelated to that, so it's a separate question, just to be clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing that. So, the level of scrutiny that this budget has endured, I think, is commendable by not only this council, but by staff as well, so I want to thank them and recognize them for that effort. The questions that were brought forward in that memo were brought forward by myself, and one follow-up question I do have regarding those questions was regarding reserves. So, my original question was why the proposed contribution falls below, according to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing best practice level. In the notice or the memo here, it was that we already have a policy in place that puts forward a recommendation of a 5%, and I think, what my concern, my question is, is if we were to increase that to what the recommended value is, especially if we're already in a quote-unquote favorable tax levy situation, you know, increasing the reserve amount by $335, or $335,000 would bring us up to that benchmark. So, my question would be if council could consider that increase to the reserves, just to make sure we are putting away enough for future to make sure we are putting away enough for future, future projects? And how increasing it by $335,000 to meet that benchmark, how it would impact the tax levy, if at all?
I think I want to answer that because I want to talk about reserves because people have been telling me that the, to the Facebook financial pages have talked about reserves. So I want to kind of comment on that. Where do I begin? Reserve issues are, are somewhat tied to the asset management issues. And I think before I get into that, you, you mentioned what impact would that have on the taxes? If we were to put $335,000 into reserves, that's another 4.5% roughly, that would, that taxes would increase. So instead of 3%, it would be 7.5%. But I'll come back to that in a minute. Reserve issues are somewhat tied, as I said, to asset management issues. That is, how bad is our infrastructure problem? So how much money do we need to, to improve our infrastructure or our roads or our water or wastewater, that kind of, that kind of thing? The guidelines that AMO puts out and the guidelines that the Ministry of Municipal, you know, municipalities and housing puts out are guidelines that I guess they're aimed at, at making sure that communities put enough aside in reserves to deal with, you know, the asset management problems. Like last year, we put in $465,000 in reserves from the tax levy. This year, we're putting in $565,000 from the tax levy. So we're actually increasing the amount that we're putting into reserves from last year. Now, as Counselor De Rosier mentioned, past councils have indicated that 5% is the kind of what council wanted to put in reserves and we are putting in 7.7% this year. So we're certainly meeting, I think, the requirements that past council have. And I think that we're also meeting future requirements here as well. The, the building of reserves does not rely on the tax levy. We build our reserves through our investments. And we got a, you know, a number of investments. And we build them also through growth fees like development charges, through grants such as the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund and the Ontario Community Investment Fund. I think that's the correct, OSF anyway. And, you know, things like earth investments. We would need a huge amount of money to, you know, from our tax reserve, from our tax levy to, to increase reserves you just mentioned. I think our reserve plan is such that we will build reserves from growth as we move through the next years. Counselor Rahi asked, how are we going to, you know, keep things below 4% or 5% or whatever? Part of that is that we are anticipating a huge number of growth investments, a huge number of, of growth money, I guess. And we're in a good position in the next two or three years to do that. So anyway, our, our reserve position this year, I think, is the correct and responsible reserve position. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. Probably it's, it's confusing to understand asset management. Here's my Pete's definition of how we get to asset management. List your capital assets, determine their replacement cost, determine their lifespan, and budget to replace. It's as simple as that, but it's much more complicated because there are reams of paper that say this is how you have to do it. The mayor touched on our practice of 5%. And this year, we're over 7% contribution to asset management. Sure, with a stroke of the pen tonight, we could say in, in amounts of $77,000 at 1% tax rate, we could add that to the, to the bill for next year. Anybody wants to make a motion on that, feel free. But right now, we're sitting at 2.8, 2.9. Much more palatable, much more affordable to the people of Elmer in times of economic challenge. If council wanted to consider that 5% commitment, it would be appropriate to bring that up in the April-May period and change the, the practice from 5 to whatever number that council deems appropriate. But right now, it's a responsible budget and it, as best as we can enhances programs where we could. But again, it keeps the, the tax rate at a realistic, affordable number for the majority of people in town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, can we have another question, Counselor De Rosier?
Just a comment, I guess. I, I think providing those comments and those insights are really valuable, especially for residents. I think the core concern that I'm observing as well as other residents is that we've identified, like this municipality has identified, according to our documents, $16 million in unfunded capital projects over the next four years. And we haven't been clarity, given clarity on what the fiscal implications are for those projects. So if this council and leadership feel confident that, you know, we don't, we don't need to increase our reserves and those projects will be affordable in the, in the years to come to facilitate, then I, I think council and I thank leadership for providing that clarity. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I certainly do feel confident that we are, are going to be able to handle the capital projects for the next three, four years. And, you know, growth will pay for growth. And we are going to be increasing our reserves as we move along in the next years. But for this year, we've got a great budget and, and I think a responsible solution to reserves. So we have a resolution on the floor. All those in favor? Any opposed? None, as carried. Thank you. I think the next item is any new business or matters of urgency? Reading of bylaws?
That council gives three reading to and approves bylaw 66-25 being a bylaw to authorize the signing of agreement between the, the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and the Province of Ontario for mental health supports for public safety personnel. Bylaw 67-25 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council held at the regular council meeting on November 5th. Bylaw 68-25 being a bylaw to amend. Bylaw 66-23 being a bylaw to authorize and regulate the planting, care, maintenance, protection, and removal of trees on municipally owned right of ways, parks, and lands located within the boundaries of the Town of Elmer. And that's the Town of Elmer tree management policy. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Mover in second, there. Counselor De Rosier, Counselor Oslach. Any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, as carried. I intend inquiries by members? Seeing none, statements and committed reports from members? Counselor De Rosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to provide an update regarding my visit to the House of Commons earlier this week. During my time in Ottawa, I had the opportunity to meet with federal leaders and representatives, gaining insights and knowledge that I plan to bring back here and apply in our community. I received a formal tour of the House of Commons. I attended a question period and participated in a lunch with federal colleagues. I also had the privilege of observing several committee hearings that addressed important issues including, including supporting victims of intimate partner violence, protecting children involved in abuse and exploitation, and federal bail reform. I am grateful for the opportunity to represent Elmer at Canada's parliament and for the chance to see the work being done at the federal level on these critical matters. I would also like to thank our MP, Mr. Andrew Lawton, for kindly hosting me during my visit. It was a valuable experience and I look forward to bringing back practical ideas and perspectives that can help build a better community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, there is no report from me. Notice of motion? Okay. Meeting close to the public resolution?
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at 8:58 PM to discuss the following matters. Director of Financial Services, report Finance 24-25, tax write-off, update provisions for 2025. And that consideration of this item is close to the public pursuant to section 239 to E and K of the Municipal Act as amended as the subject matter pertains litigation or potential litigation involving matters before an administrative tribunal affecting the municipality or local board. And K, a plan, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
All right, mover in second, there. Counselor De Rosier, Deputy Mayor Barber. All those in favor, as carried. Brief recess and moving post. Brief recess and move in opposed.